Welcome to the early edition of the Lancaster City Council meeting. Thank you for coming. Roll call.
Councilmember Johnson.
Present.
Mann.
Present.
Smith.
Here.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Crist.
Present.
Mayor Chairman Paris.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Ms. Sado's not here. Roll call for the Housing Authority, please.
Housing Authority Member Harvey. Mann.
Present.
Smith.
Here.
Vice Chairman Crist.
Present.
Chair Zetto. We have a quorum.
Thank you. The invocation tonight will be Pastor Tim Etherington. I'm the product of the Anlo Valley Education System. From Lancaster Evangelical Preacher.
Aren't we all? If you're inclined, please join me in prayer. Our Father in Heaven, may your name be kept holy tonight. We're grateful that you rule over human affairs because that means we're not left on our own in the important matters that we face. We gather this evening to make decisions for the people of the city of Lancaster and we humbly ask that you would guide us, that we would seek justice for the poor and rich, the strong and the weak, that we would administer the rights and freedoms that have been granted to us in this great nation, that we would, above all, seek to do good and resist evil. Would you please give these women and men who represent the city a full measure of wisdom and insight tonight? By your grace and mercy, may these, your servants, wield the authority that you have given them for the benefit and blessing of the people of Lancaster. I ask these things in the name of Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you. Mr. Creed, are you gonna?
Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is it Ashakia? Ashakia. Okay, come here and tell me how to do it again. Ashakia. Are you responsible for? Who's your mother? You're responsible for that. Good, good choice. Come on down. Come on down. Something tells me you had something to do with this. Ashakia is a student at Anlo Valley High School. Out of numerous applicants nationwide, she is being recognized as one of the only 1,000 Gates scholarships this year. Keep that in mind. That's out of millions. As a Gates Scholar, she will receive a full ride scholarship to the United Negro College Fund that is, from the United Negro College Fund, that is renewable each year and will continue to fund education through the masters and doctorate programs. Wait a minute, I thought Bill Gates was supposed to pay for this. She is planning to use the scholarship to help cover cost of attendance at the University of Hawaii. That is a good choice. For her bachelor's degree and Harvard University for her masters. Wow. You're gonna find the climate a bit different. On behalf of the city of Lancaster, we have a plaque for you and $1,000. And you see that guy right there about your money, okay? Thank you. We have the recognition this year for the 2013-2014 Youth Commission. That's you guys, right? We have, the Lancaster City Council would like to thank the 2014 Lancaster Youth Commission members for their service this past school year. Tonight marks the end of their term and we'd like to present each member with a certificate and appreciation of their service. This year's commissioners in their respective high schools are Dalia Gonzalez. Tell her I'm so disappointed. We have Jeffrey Rosales from Eastside High School. We have Kalene Hernandez from Periclee High School. And Tiffany Darden from Quartz Hill High School. Hey, wait a minute. Shall we get a picture in front of the council with everyone?
Any of the parents can come up too if you need to get pictures.
No, after we're done. Now we can have the parents come up. Want to get a picture with everyone? Oh, I see. Okay, okay.
They're afraid to now.
They're afraid to. Thank you, guys. You did a good job. Okay, that was it? Good. Any agenda items to be removed?
Yes, we apologize for the inconvenience. We would like to have CC3 moved to the meeting in July. This adoption of the ordinance and if you need a further explanation, we can provide that.
That's for the consent calendar, correct?
That is correct.
All right. On the council agenda, CA1. Oh, that's for Stephen Derryberry as President of the Lancaster Performing Arts Foundation and Board of Directors. Steve, where are you? I thought I saw you. How much did you raise Sunday, Friday night or Saturday night?
I think the unofficial number is 130,000.
Now, of course, we're appointing you for your great leadership skills and your charming personality, but the money's really important. Thank you.
Oh, well, thank you.
The Performing Arts Center would not be nearly what it is if it wasn't for the work of your board and we look forward to how you lead it. Okay? Thank you. Do we need to do a vote for this or?
Yeah.
All right, I'm nominating him.
I'll second that.
And let's hope. You made it. And it's five zero. See what 100 grand will get you. Okay, and I'm nominating Steve, Stevie Love, Stephen Strauss to the Lancaster Mu... This isn't working, is it? To the Lancaster Museum and Public Art Foundation Board of Directors. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
In favor? Do you want to call them up if they're here? Are you here?
They're both here.
Okay, this is a one-year appointment, you know? We need another 130 grand and you can... I think the city clerk is going to administer the... Oh, yeah, we got to swear them in, don't we? What about Stephen? Do we swear him in?
So are you a member of the...
Yeah, so are.
So we're just gonna trust him? Okay.
Okay, you will raise your right hand. Do you say your name?
Stephen Strauss.
Do you?
Stevie Love.
Stephen Strauss.
solemnly swear that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies foreign and domestic, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter.
I do.
I do, yes.
And the top one is mine. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any speaker cards on the council minutes?
None.
Is there a motion?
Motion approved, M1.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Fantastic. Oh, I'm abstaining. I wasn't here. You need to say four zero one for the record. Oh, four zero one was the count?
I'm saying two.
You were saying two?
Yeah.
Oh, I heard you weren't here. Did you have a note?
Yes.
All right, on the consent calendar, we're gonna remove CC3. Any speaker cards?
Yes, we do. We have one speaker card.
Michael Reeves.
Welcome back, Michael.
What happened to you? Michael, what happened to you? What happened?
What happened?
What happened?
Okay. I would like to speak on CC3 and CC4 tonight.
Michael, you're aware that we pulled CC3?
Okay, but I can still speak on it?
Yes.
No, it's not, it's not before a CC.
He can have his three minutes.
Well, I won't talk about it, but I'll go ahead to CC4 then. CC4 is approval of the work at the corner of J8, 20th Street West by the new Marriott Hotel. The city has changed the lanes in front of the service station, Shell Station, and we have two right turn lanes instead of one. Coming down 20th Street to J8, there's two lanes that go into J8 to the freeway, which is nice, except when you get into the service station, you can't get out of the service station because the two lanes are right turn lanes. And it creates sort of a hazard because you have to scoot out real quick to the middle lane, the traffic lane. I think that was a mistake to put two right lanes. I know it expedites the traffic, but it also is a safety hazard for people at the service station. It's hard enough to get into that Shell Station and get out of it anyway. This just compounds it. And while I'm speaking about it, I'm sorry we put up these barriers in the middle of 20th Street West in front of the Marriott. You know, that street someday could be a real beautiful street with that hotel and businesses all the way down to Avenue K. And we have ruined it by putting those barriers in there. It just ruins the view. That could be a nice spacious tree-lined street with the Marriott Hotel and high-class stores all the way down there to K. And I'm sorry the city did that and I hope that in the future they will consider the future and the vistas of some of these avenues that we want to build on. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael.
I'll move we approve the consent calendar as currently comprised?
I'll second that.
Let's vote. Okay, public hearing item number one. Are there any cards?
Yes.
Oh, you need to open it? Is this the one where you gave us the council questions so we would sound knowledgeable and?
You are knowledgeable because you've all been to the briefings.
Thank you.
We took some notes in the briefings of questions that the council had asked and we decided to provide the answers to you.
This is what you call transparency. They gave us the questions to ask. Isn't that nice?
So the public would be there as long as... As long as the questions were there.
Okay.
They provide good information. What we're before you today, Mayor Paris and City Council, is to present the city's proposed 2014-2015 budget. The way our city does it a little different. We have it in a public hearing so that the public's aware the budget's out there and then you will be considering it for adoption in two weeks. I'm gonna make some opening remarks and then Barbara and Jason will follow me and then I will wrap it up and then we'll have time for Q and A or comments or anything else that you may want. The story of last year was survival, how we survived since 2007 and what we were doing just to stay afloat. This is a better year. While I wouldn't quite say this is thrive, we are on implementing projects that are gonna help us thrive in the future and we're already thriving in many ways. First, let's talk about challenges and opportunities. But in order to understand that, you have to understand how we budget. First off, when you budget, it's not, it's like anything else. You look at your reserves and you look at that as a savings account. For example, in your own personal life, you may be living paycheck to paycheck, which is fine, but if your kid hits someone else's car, you decide, do I use insurance? Do I pay it out of savings? Do I put a credit card? Cities are no different. We have to plan for the unknown, emergencies et cetera. So you'll hear Barbara talk about our reserves. The next thing in a budget is the 12-month window, the window that you're adopting. You look at the services that you maintain. You look at what needs you need to address. We've heard loud and clear from the council, not just public safety, but we need to become more creative and do more road lane miles in terms of rehab, which you'll hear about today as well too. And you look at your revenues and your expenses. Barbara will talk about those specifics. Also important in a budget is you look at your long-term. How is your income changing? Again, no different than a family. You could be living fine year to year, but you have kids to send to college. That's an obligation in the future. If you don't plan for that, it's still gonna come. We need to look at our changing revenue sources. You'll hear Jason talk about that. One of the most important things about a budget in this city that's different than a lot of cities is it's not a reason to say no. It's a flexible tool that we use. It's a guide to show you what you have, but it's also adaptable. For example, we did not budget for BYD. We did not budget for Morton. We didn't budget for the field of drafts, but we didn't say no and say, no, this isn't in the budget. We looked, knew what the guidelines are and figured out how to do it. A budget has to be a flexible document. Let's talk for a moment about priorities. First and foremost, the priorities reflect direction of council in your words and deeds throughout the year. Safety, roads, some of the Measure R projects. We're fortunate enough, Vice Mayor and Ken Mann were able to help us get business attraction. It reflects those priorities. It also reflects, this is obviously not the first time you've seen the budget, our meetings and briefings. We list our priorities as financial stability and reserves, public safety, maintenance of facilities, roads, and growing the city's revenue base. Financial stability is most important because without that you don't do anything. But also what you see up here is you see those things not in the abstract. They're not in results, any of those. They're a means to result. This is not SimCity. This is a real city with real people. So what you see there is solar to show the innovation and the creation and the ability to do that as a community and grow and the events, the ability to engage. So the solutions. How have we met the priorities and how have we been able to get from 2007 today and on the brink of, quite honestly, ready to take off in many ways? Here and simple, partnerships. Championship teams use their entire roster. They don't just use a part of it. We are using our entire roster in the city of Lancaster, from citizen commissions to businesses to people that were not involved in government before. And that's a credit to the mayor and the council because that has not always been the direction of the city. Examples, we partnered, the mayor was at a meeting with KB Home when we married them with BYD, had the idea of a net zero home. Because of that, we have BYD and we have Nexus Water, who then came to the 0.2 house and is gonna set up their US operations in the United States. By partnering with one, we get others. That's a big deal and that's how we've been able to survive. The community, the citizen commissions, you're gonna hear in the next presentation after this item from our Neighbor Vitalization Commission. That commission started as the name, the Section 8 Commission, but they've grown beyond that and they're gonna tell you how they're addressing the health needs of the community in a very exciting program they have for next year. We look at the real world. Anywhere we can go, we came up with the Vista Program. These young folks are gonna tell you later on about some of the programs they're working. So we've embraced and engaged and that's a credit to your leadership. With that, Barbara's gonna talk a little bit about the financial and the capital program. Jason's gonna talk about the exciting future and I will wrap it up.
Good afternoon, Mayor Paris, Vice Mayor Crist, council members. The economic outlook and related revenue projections for fiscal year 2014-15 is really not much different from the current fiscal year. Sales tax and property tax revenues are expected to grow just slightly from current levels, actually less than 3%, and revenues related to development are expected to be just about the same as this year. So the proposed expenditure budget that we're bringing forward to you is basically the same as the budget for the current fiscal year. Total expenditures are just over 1% higher than the current adopted fiscal year 13-14 budget. With that outlook, we are continuing to do more with less. The budget assumes keeping 92.5 positions vacant. Employees are now sharing a greater portion of the cost of benefits. The city continues to look for ways to maximize its financial resources and make the most effective use of restricted funds. While we have needed to dip into reserves the past few years, we continue to maintain the required 10% operating reserve and additional 10% financial stability reserve. Recession hit Lancaster hard. Sales tax revenues dropped by 35% and property tax revenues saw declines of over 25%. While we are slowly making our way back, we still have not reached our peaks of the mid-2000s. The city has done an exemplary job of looking for creative and innovative ways to meet the service needs of our citizens while working to keep expenses in line with revenues. We live within our means. Under the council's direction and policy decisions, we've maintained a healthy financial position during one of the worst recessions in history. There are four major components to the proposed budget. Salaries, operations and maintenance, capital outlay, and the capital improvement program. The largest sector of the budget is public safety, which includes the contract for LA County Sheriff's Services. The proposed budget funds the contract at the same levels of service in the current year with the same number of deputies. It also includes funding of leaps for the year, Business Watch and Neighborhood Watch The general fund, which is the funding source for the majority of the city's services, is proposed at $52 million with revenues estimated at $52.9 million. When transfers to other funds are taken into account, reserves in the amount of $1.1 million are needed to balance the budget. This is down from the $3 million needed to balance the 13-14 adopted budget. It's important to note that the city is conservative in estimating revenues and manages its budgeted funds in order to have savings at the end of the year. So we anticipate that when we close 14-15, we will need little, if any, of those reserves to balance the budget by the end of the year. The capital improvement program portion of the budget is where we account for projects that are large in nature and typically impact city infrastructure. The focus of this year's program is road maintenance and road improvement. There are 15 different funding sources that make up the $22 million proposal, most of which are, or all of which are restricted in their use. They include $7.5 million in Measure R funds and grants, $3.7 million in gas tax funds, and $2.7 million in highway safety improvement grant programs. The projects proposed include pavement management and maintenance with 195 lane miles of roads to see some type of improvement. The city has steadily increased the number of lane miles it is able to repair, from 40 lane miles in fiscal year 11-12 to the current proposed 195 lane miles. The significant increase is directly related to the efficiencies the city has put into place and the in-house road maintenance efforts that we are undertaking. Also included are Avenue I improvements from Challenger to 35th Street East, freeway interchange improvements at Avenue G, J, K, and M, and school pedestrian improvements. At this time, I'd like to introduce our deputy city manager, Jason Cottle.
Mayor, Vice Mayor Crist, and council, thank you for the opportunity. The budget process gives us an opportunity each year to kind of look at the future as well, kind of try to predict, I shouldn't say predict, try to prepare for the changes coming forward. And we get this opportunity every day and every year and we try to do this regularly. If any of you have a child that's under 20, you've probably seen that they spend a lot of time on their phones. Their information comes through their phones, their TV comes through their phones. And all of us have partaken in the act of buying on the internet. We've seen the models at Amazon where they have drones come and drop products on our front door, things like this happening. And of course, we've seen the value of our property fluctuate up and down. Well, those three revenue sources, franchise fees, sales tax, and property tax are three greatest revenues. As we look to the future, we have to mitigate and protect against these changes. I bet when my child becomes independent, they are not going to have a wired phone. They're not going to get their media, they're not gonna get their telecommunications services from a wire connected to a wall. They're probably, hopefully, not gonna get their power from a wire connected to a grid, potentially, depending upon what happens in technology and battery services. So we have to prepare for the future. And these changing revenue streams are consistently changing, right? We're gonna see more buying on the internet. There's about 6% of the total sales nationwide are online currently. Estimates show that there is gonna be a 50 to 100% increases over the next five to 10 years. We have to prepare for that day. Studies have shown that online viewing of TV has increased 245% over the last year. So this changing demographic is gonna have an impact on our revenue stream. We have to prepare to mitigate against that. And this budget represents some of those changes and challenges. First and foremost is an opportunity to brag about one of our business partners, Kaiser, which has built a new facility there on Avenue L. And if you haven't seen it, it's magnificent. I can't believe anybody hasn't seen it. But it's those types of properties that have longstanding value because of design and because of the structural process and because of the services they're providing in there. Properties like that will continue to not be volatile in their v... Properties like that will continue to not be volatile in their value, but continue to generate longstanding sustainable development and sustainable financial revenues. The same thing could be true with our housing as we proceed in the future of trying to create housing that maintains its value. The net zero home was mentioned earlier. Some of the design standards and guidelines that we've talked about all add value and long-term sustainability to those properties. Of course, the reuse of our facilities or the unique use of our facilities, such as Jet Hawk Stadium during the Beer Festival, or the Field of Drafts, sorry, my, I sit wrong to give me, give me looks, the brand, the Field of Drafts. And our streetlights, I know we've talked about them a little bit, but I think to understand what we've done there, you've got to understand the business model, what we've done in the past. In the past, we'd ask our developers to build these assets, these streetlights, dedicate them to Edison. We would then assess our taxpayers' funds to pay for those streetlights over a period of time, and that $4 million we'd assess our residents, we'd capture and deliver to Edison, right? That revenue stream goes to Edison. That profit margin goes to Edison and its shareholders. Changing that model allows that to be a continuing and long-term revenue stream for the city. It would also provide opportunities for greater technology, greater choice, and greater access. The same is true with our energy program and Choice Energy as we form the Community Choice Aggregation. That is another revenue stream that we haven't capitalized on, but long-term will have a huge effect on our long-term financial sustainability and growth. The challenge, of course, is to say, how do we see the future, predict the future, and how do we accomplish and change that future? And you know, it's, as much as we can say that online sales are changing, we still show growth in sales tax, right? Barbara talks about an increase in sales tax. But we have to prepare now. Now, the things we lay in place today may not bear fruit 10, 15 years from now, but as we prepare for the future and as things change, we'll hopefully be far more prepared than another city. Some of the challenges we talked about, some of the strategy we talked about are included in this budget this year. Thank you.
Jason's analogy about the cell phone, he's right, his kids will be getting their service and TV differently, but one thing that won't change, if history is a guide, he'll still be paying for it when they're independent. I speak from experience, Jason. To wrap it up, success comes from risk and failure, and that's an important concept for people to know. In our example here, this gentleman is taking a risk. When we take risks, we like to have a Plan B, and we should have a Plan B. Unless this man's rope is tethered, his failure is bad. Plan B is very bad for him. If his rope is tethered, he's going to learn from that and get better. We have been successful because this council and this community and this staff is not afraid to fail. And we've had our failures. We talked about streetlights. We start out with streetlights by looking at the budget and saying, wow, Edison is overcharging us. We're going to go to Edison, Mayor Paris was there, and we're going to tell them, don't overcharge us anymore.
Yeah, that worked.
How did that work? I left a part of the story about how you told me you were going to take the polls from them, but...
That was a fun meeting.
That was a good meeting. But we didn't stop there. In preparing for that and looking, we learned about streetlights, and we learned about the opportunities and the different rates. So when it was time and we were ready, we were the first city in Edison's territory to say, we'll buy the streetlights, because we knew already from our failure. That was a success that came from that. The CCA is another example. We started out, we worked with our school districts and said, every school district in California is going to have Lancaster Solar Structures on it, we're going to be rich. That didn't come to pass. But in looking at that, we learned about how Edison works and how Powers works and how the PUC works, so the opportunity to form a CCA was there. We were able then to say, we're going to be the first in Edison's territory to do it, because we had already been in that realm and learning. We had talked about a material recovery facility, which was going to be here by now, it's going to provide millions of dollars. That didn't come to pass as we talked about it. But what did come to pass is in order to get there, with the leadership of Marv Krist and Rex and everyone else, we had to renegotiate our contract with Waste Management. We lowered the rates for the citizens, we got more money for the city, and we still controlled the waste stream. So while it didn't happen the way we said it was, we're in a position with greater revenues and we still control. The point is that you have to be able to take those prudent risks. The other thing is, you have to look at where we at now, are we taking advantage of our opportunities? The city itself is taking advantage of a lot of opportunities, but what I want to focus on is the engagement of others. That's indicative of a vibrant community, of using your whole roster. Just look at what's going on in this community, not going to go over everything because we don't have enough time. Last meeting, we had a great presentation from the fair. By using local control and letting creative people work, that fair is more engaging and relevant than it's been in forever. That's a big deal. Hotels have voted to assess themselves to get better, but they're not only doing that, they feel that Lancaster's enough that they're doing tours with their staff, so they learn about Lancaster and they have a good website. They've done that, not us, they've just done it with our help. The Boulevard Businesses, they've also assessed themselves. They just completed their wedding on the Boulevard. But they're doing their own events. They had a cruise night on Friday, which is a great night. Each of the businesses has different promotions. Kinetic, for example, has a vinyl night on Wednesday. If all of you remember your records, you can bring them on Wednesday night and you can play them. Our commissions, our citizens have stepped up like never before. You're going to hear from the Neighborhood Vitalization Commission. All of those folks want to continue to be on that commission because they're excited what they're going to do next year. Businesses vote with their pocketbooks. Kaiser's come here, High Desert Hospitals come here, BYD, Morton, Two Hotels. Community giving, the mayor mentioned the LPAC record. Closing opportunities aren't there forever. That gentleman can do that at his age, he's not going to be doing that at 70. His son or daughter may be. Our opportunity is now. Our community leadership's going to change, our council's going to change, our staff is going to change. There'll be other opportunities in the future, but the opportunities you're here now may never pass this way again. Our financial condition, our leadership, our engaged community allows us to take advantage right now of those things. So a budget is much more than just a set of documents and numbers, it's something to take advantage of the opportunities, to continue what you're doing well and to improve what you're not doing well. And that's what's included in this budget. We'll be going over that, and it'll be obviously available, it is available for the public to look at, obviously. We will, as I said, be taking it to council on June 24th. We do thank you for your engagement during the budget process, direction, the leadership, the lots of meetings, and throughout the year, being very clear about the direction of the city. And I end by thanking Barbara and Pam and Cole Rizzo for their leadership at the city staff of that. We're happy to answer any questions, whether they're on this or anything that's not.
I appreciate you, Chee Chee.
Ask this one.
This one? Why is Rex here today? Jason's going to answer that one, Jason?
How about the AVA QMD? You were giving money the Air District. So we gave you money for, to synchronize all the streetlights. What lights are going to be synchronized and is it in this budget and how are we going to use that money?
Robert and I were just talking about that today. The money was given to both cities, Palmton and Lancaster. It is in this budget, there's two phases. Phase one is between 40 and 70 signals will, in the core of the city, will be what's called adaptive synchronization. That will happen this year. Means it deals with the situation at hand. All 138 signals in the community will be timed this year. And timing is different, obviously, Robert can go into the specifics of that. But that money will touch every, all 138 signals in the city of Lancaster, and the most heavily traveled corridors will be synchronized, and it will be done in this fiscal year.
You want to talk a little bit about the paving, what we're going to do differently?
Yeah, Barbara's talked about the road miles, but at the last meeting, the council took an item, it was on consent calendar, as in retrospect, we probably should have put it on his new business. It's an exciting opportunity, and I give Robert and his staff all the credit with an assist from Jason and Barbara. They went from looking and saying, us just asking for double the money we're going to get isn't going to happen, so that's not our solution. So they figured ways to do more with less. We could do more in-house, we can start chip seal, we can do all of those things. But then when they looked at, they experimented and found a product that's better than the other products on the market, that this guy was manufacturing, held a patent to, but he really wasn't promoting it. We've partnered with this gentleman that we will make that product in Lancaster for use on our roads. It's stronger, it's easier to deal with, it lasts longer, and it's cheaper us making it. So we're able then to use that to get to that 195 miles a year. But in doing the plant, and we'll build the plant with one-time money, we can also have excess demand and excess capacity where we can then work with other cities and say, hey, we can make this stuff for you, you want to use it, we use it on our roads, it's better, cheaper, et cetera. So we have that business opportunity, which then will allow us to do more roads. And then finally, Jason and some of Robert's staff are working on how we brand what we do at roads, because we don't do a very good job. We say we're going to do X number of lane miles, but we don't say what that means, what percentage of the city, how do we do it, whatever. Someone gave an idea of a thermometer, you know, every road will be touched in seven years or something like that. So we need to tell the story better as well, too. But we've heard loud and clear, and the public's right, we are going to get, we're going to continue to improve in road maintenance.
What's the name of the product?
It's by a company called EcoStar, it's got a, probably not the best branding name, I forget what it is, it's a slurry, I forget what they call it. Traction seal slurry.
When are we going to be producing?
We're building the plant right now, we'll be producing within 60 days.
Where are we building it?
On our maintenance yard. So it's a good partnership.
Going to talk about the, how it's environmentally friendly and it's, there's no carbon imprint from this, and what we're looking for for the future?
Yeah, that's a good point, and I'm remiss in saying, Vice Mayor Krist introduced us to this gentleman, and it's been a good relationship to date. The product also, when you compare it, and I don't have the statistics in front of me, dramatically reduces the carbon footprint and greenhouse gas emissions for conventional road techniques. Essentially, if you think about now, you have hot mix made somewhere else, you have to bring it in, you have to put it on the road, it's, the process is less. This is a cold process, we make it, it stores for a lot longer, and you then can lay it yourselves with a truck, you can store it for months, so you don't have to make it as often. The other exciting part, when it's married with the second part of it, which is a rejuvenation technique, which is patented and we can't talk all about it, you literally don't have to bring any products in to your road. You're using the roads and this product to rejuvenate, basically mixing up, reconstituting it, and getting essentially a new road for it. This isn't pie in the sky or rocket science, well, it is rocket science, but it's something that's right there, right here, right now. That's the second phase of it. You can just imagine, instead of having trucks and bringing in materials and ripping up roads and taking the materials somewhere else and stuff, all you're redoing is using your roads over and over and over again. Very, very exciting.
So is the slurry patented?
Slurry's patented.
And we have a license to do what?
We have a license to use it and work with the company to partner with other cities to use it, and we'll get a percentage of that.
Do we have a region that's ours?
Southern California, Nevada, two, San Diego and Arizona.
Up to San Luis Obispo?
Yeah, including Bakersfield.
So we have the entire southern states.
Which you can imagine how many road miles that is. We'll need more than one plant, potentially.
What's our cut?
Our cut, I think, based on the contract, is that we're going to mutually agree on the wholesale price, obviously based upon our production price and the marketing costs of it. What our initial review and their initial review is, we can produce, market, and sell it for cheaper than a much inferior product that's used now, so it'll be a better product for cheaper.
How much of it do we get?
All of it. We get everything we sell. If it costs us a buck and a half to make it and we sell it for two and a half bucks, we get the buck and a half save, or the buck, save for a throughput fee, which is very minor, we pay to the company, and we buy the materials, the key component, the key chemical compounds from the company.
So they're just the vendor for the product?
Yeah, I mean, they're going to be involved every step in the way because it's mutually agreeable and everything, marketing, production, et cetera, but yeah, the, the, the more aggressive we are, the more money we'll make, and our roads will be better for it.
And how long do we have the license?
I think it's 15 years with a five-year mutually agreeable extension.
15 years with five-year extensions.
You want to say that in the mic? All right, good, thank you. Any other city doing something like this? Absolutely, positively not. That was the guy climbing the mountain part.
We're not going to get arrested for it, are we?
No, we're not going to get arrested. We have a crack legal team by Allison Burns and Jocelyn Corbett, who are making sure that everything we're doing, we're doing the right way and legal, and the partners we're working with have a similar legal team. You just have to be creative. There's a difference between why we did 40 lane miles last year and we're doing 190 this year, because the product and everything is so much better, we can produce so much more for the amount of money that we have. So we're going to show the other communities that they can produce or cut their budgets, whatever they want to do with this product. It'll save them 30 to 40% on what they're doing now, or they can do 30 to 40% more.
And the process is faster.
Correct.
Raise the price and let them save 20%.
You're talking my language.
No, this is an environmentally sound product that we've gone through. The councilwoman and myself went out to several different demonstrations, and this is, it's a great, great product.
Our staff, and I'll give John Cantrell, one of our staff members who's been working on the ground on this stuff, came up with an ingenious idea. We wanted to test it with the county, and if you go through the typical county process, it's going to be years, years. But he figured out the magic words. We'll put it on your street for free so you can see it. Magically, everything walked away, so we're going to do a demonstration with the county on the product. It's very exciting. We'd also be remiss in saying, part of us being able to do this is we made a presentation six or nine months ago, Ray Hunt and Richard Long, we guys authorized us to purchase equipment. That purchase of equipment coming in and us training our staff allows us to hit the ground running and allows this company to have enough confidence in us, because we were there to take that opportunity when they said we have this product. We were literally, I mean, 24 hours later on the street said, we'll let you use the street and alley, whatever, to demonstrate it. We demonstrated at Jet Hawk Stadium, it's, that's the slurry seal that's on Jet Hawk Stadium. So being in the position to take advantage of the opportunity is one of the reasons many other cities are doing like, stuff like this.
Does it need the process that we use to work, or can it use, can it be used on more orthodox projects?
No, it can be used in any process. It's literally, Robert, if you want to talk about it, it's literally a machine that puts it in the front, does it and lays it in the back, and you spray a fog seal over it.
Mark's absolutely right. There's actually several different products, and there's different ways to apply it. There's the Phase One, Phase Two, and Phase Two is a little unusual, unique, but Phase One, the application is a slurry seal, a gip seal kind of product, is conventional and it's done all over the place, we just have a much better product.
You know, Mayor, what's, what's, could be phenomenal with this, because often is, we don't look at it from a, a large business model, but I bet if we asked Barbara to break down what the average city spends to take care of their highways in the geographical area that we talked about, and if we can produce product at 20% cheaper, I mean, stop and think, when somebody gets ready to vote on their budget and their process to take care of highways, they're going to be standing at our door, getting in line, because why wouldn't you use a process that saves them 20% versus conventional methods?
In addition, I agree with you, councilman, in addition to saving the money, they're also saving time, and again, environmentally friendly. It's just a win-win in so many areas, and it's being done here in our city of Lancaster, making history again. It truly is exciting.
So this could be as spectacular as falling the lead of solar.
Well...
From a business model...
No, I agree, I agree.
It's different, but every city has roads and it's a...
Yeah. Are we outsourcing the marketing, or are we doing that in-house, or are we going to do that?
We're going to talk about that again, that's mutually agreeable. We're likely to outsource the key components to make sure that we have top-notch marketing. But remember, there's an element, too, that the reason you partner with the city is, you can go all you want as a salesperson, say this is a great product. When a council member calls another council member and says, I want your public works director to meet my public works director, or when you say, you can come to our city and see it on our streets, you can do this for cheaper and better, are you getting hit up on road problems in your city? up on road problems in your city? That means all the difference in the world. You can't replace the credibility of a city that's actually using the product. So the answer is absolutely, we're going to have top-notch marketing in terms of materials and contacts. The city has an essential role. We have credibility, we're using the product.
I think I speak for all of us, I want you to look in the city first, to see if we have the, the talent in the city to, to develop that marketing. If we have to go out, then we'll go out, but I want that looked at first.
Absolutely.
I recognize it's a new product, but that doesn't mean we don't have incredibly talented marketing people right here. So pay attention to that, if you will.
Oh, absolutely. In fact, it's, I'm remiss in saying that, one of the things that this council has done, too, is we are much, much more cognizant of always looking for those local opportunities.
Is it a taxable item?
It's likely not taxable at that point, there's portions of it, the market, that could be developed for taxable.
Good, good, thank you. Yeah, material-based.
Safety.
Before we leave streets, you all saw, saw that video on YouTube with the solar-powered streets?
Wow. I saw that, that's spectacular. I sent that to Mark.
Yeah, our staff.
That is fantastic.
Could you have Robert Neal reach out to them and see if there, there's a possibility of a pilot project on Lancaster Boulevard?
We have, yes, the answer is yes, but we already have had some staff reach out to them. We found out they're in the development phase, they just got a second federal grant to do it from DOT, Department of Transportation. They're not ready for certain aspects of mass marketing, they have to test reliability and such, but we've offered a test bed for whenever and however they want it, and we'll keep that contact up, absolutely.
There could be something there, too.
You were way ahead of us. Mr. Neal, continue to amaze me.
Because every one of you sent us the video, too. Including Ken's wife, so.
I, I let her do the technology part.
She was very forceful, by the way.
Which tells you the power of YouTube.
Absolutely.
When we sell this, this street product.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
It's a well-done video, too, by the way, that video on the, on the roads. In fact, what we'll do is we'll put it on our website so that people can see.
Potential.
Robert, it doesn't change the coefficient of friction at all?
I don't know.
On the street? No, not the, the, what we're going to do with the repaving.
Public safety, we didn't reduce it?
No, not at all. In fact, we're able to accommodate the increase that we get each year from the county. We're able to do all of the operations, and in fact, through the work of Lee DeRico, who's on vacation this week, or would be here, we've actually been able to get more resources from the county, and Lee is a very good contract manager with both that and other contracts with the county, so that's one of the reasons we're able to save what Barbara said, but there's not, only is there no reduction, our special teams have really been making a difference in robbery suppression team, burglary team, all of those. We're also able to handle special events with that, and our staff is doing a very good job, along with the Criminal Justice Commission, of reaching out to the various businesses, those that are working with us, which most of them are now. So we're excited about the future of public safety, and that's notwithstanding that the, the challenge we have is exponentially higher with everything that's being released from the state and the county jail, so I commend Pat and his staff. We do have a sad announcement, that our operations lieutenant Kent Craig was just named the police chief of the city of Tehachapi. So, good for us, bad for Kent, but it'll, we'll keep working. They made a great choice.
Couldn't they pick the ones we don't like?
Those are the ones we gave recommendation letters to, they saw through that.
That is a big loss.
I'd just like to say, it's a wonderful presentation, and as we were saying, economy, with the funding the way it is, that how creative you guys have been, and we, as a council, are so proud to have people that are so creative in making sure that we meet not just what is needed in our community, but also the fun part of it, like you were saying, the Beer Fest, and I know I said it wrong, Field of, Field of, what is it? Field of Drafts, Field of Drafts. But it truly takes passion, commitment, and pride to do that, and that's what all of the city staff has, is those three elements. And again, I, I think that we are all very honored and very proud to be able to live here and be able to do the things that we still are able to do. Thank you.
If I might, I'd like to ask Jason, Mayor, to very quickly, in a minute, just talk about what we're doing this year in the CCA and streetlights, because it's not pie in the sky, the actions that will take place this year are important for people to know. So if I might?
Before you do that, you know, six years ago, we were talking, we started talking about getting revenue generating, I mean, we're essentially going into private enterprise, we're becoming a business. This is the first real business to come to fruition, and I'm really excited that we were able to do it. I, I do envision a day where the people of Lancaster don't pay taxes. I mean, as strange as that sounds, there is absolutely no reason in the world why we can't be that big of a business. It, it does require a different model, it does require people to stretch their imaginations, it does require us to reexamine the core philosophies of how government works. But I don't see any choice if we want to maintain the standard of government that we have today, meaning police, roads, fire, all, all of those things. And I, I really appreciate having a staff that had the courage and the foresight and the enthusiasm to, to do this, because every conference you went to, they said, you can't. It, that's why I'm happy we're not going to go to jail for it, because they almost convinced me we couldn't. But you've done a wonderful thing.
We thank you, but we're just here representing everyone here, we're fortunate enough to work with really good and creative people, we just get to be the reps. We have a role, but we're the reps, and if I may, I'd like, Jason, for benefit of the public, talk about what will happen this year in CCA and street.
Thank you. Last month, the, the council approved an ordinance for the intent to form a CCA. That started a series of, of processes and projects, first of which is an RFI, which is request for information from multiple different sources as a third-party contractor in the implementation of the CCA. We're going to receive those RFI's, the deadline is Monday, so this coming Monday, we will have a very good understanding and knowledge of what type of consultants we can, well, what type of consultants we need, and the pricing and valuation associated with their services. And that's going to be the, that's going to be the only thing we're waiting on, is try to identify the cost of our services. We anticipate that those are going to come in very favorable, we'll, we'll know some more information, but if they do, January of 15, which sounds like a long way away, it's just around the corner, January 15, we'll be submitting our notice to the PUC that we will be providing energy to citizens of the city of Lancaster, and our first customer will be ourselves in March of 2015, or sorry, May of 2015. So within this budget year, we will hopefully be selling energy as an energy provider, if all things go well. And that's, that's an exciting time, there'll obviously be a whole lot of lead-up to that, rate setting, some of the things this council needs to take action for, but nonetheless, it's an exciting time that's going to really change the way we look at our budgets, the way we change, we look at energy, our influence in becoming that net-zero city. This really is the, the mechanism that's going to get us to that.
That's very exciting.
You know, Rex, I'd like to, I, I think sometimes, I, you know, we look back now, and it's been at least six years, and Rex seems to have the style of an early adopter, and he's the forward thinker, I'm sure, behind solar, but stop and think about the marriage of the CCNA and solar, because it's inevitable that linking those two together, we heard about four weeks ago that Edison has every intent of raising rates, and we heard, if I got it correct, 18% and 12. There's two, two rate increases that's been asked. I know recently there was a bunch of citizens that collectively got together to go down and, and voiced their opposition, but here we are, taking the initiative of creating this entity, and then marriage it with solar, and there's benefits to that, that some of the public may not be aware, because we don't have that line loss, because of the short distance, and I can see very soon, we're going to be able to, while everybody else's rates are going up, we'll be able to offer the citizens here in Lancaster, and hopefully beyond, who knows, maybe either rate stabilization or possibly rate reduction. And I know a lot of people are not aware of CCNA's or the, the idea of being able to go out and get bulk buying. I was involved in a business 15 years ago where we were underbuying Edison by 30% on $40,000 a month power bills. So I, I'm, I'm a clear, I can see it, and again, I appreciate Rex. Again, people may comment sometimes about, you know, where's solar taking us, and I think we've got a, a great marriage coming.
And didn't you and the councilwoman send letters to the PUC?
Yeah, I.
The councilwoman?
I hope I'm a woman, am I a woman? I hope.
Like an accusation.
Yeah, I, I, I didn't have the ability to, to get on that bus and go down there, but I did take, try to take my position and use it as, as did Sandra, so. I, I, I mean, obviously, I think this is a better solution, I mean, I, because I've got a feeling that the Public Utilities Commission, they're going to give it to them, and we're going to be faced with that. And I predict that 10 to 15 years from now, I really think Southern California Edison's just going to be in the transmission business, and solar's going to put, at least in Southern California, solar will put them out of business.
I agree with you, Council, Councilman Man. I, I also agree that this is the route to go. What I love about it is that we don't complain, but we do something about it, and we're actually acting on it, and, in all areas, just whether it be to send the letter or to be creative, again, thinking outside the box to make this happen. And I also agree with you, Councilman Man, that this is a great marriage, and thanks to our mayor to start it, and now we can have the family building from there, and we are actually building our business here as a community and being the example for other cities. So it's very exciting.
Okay, what else we got?
We have a speaker card.
Michael Reeves.
Michael, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Tell us what happened to you.
Oh, I, I was trimming a tree in my backyard, I climbed up the ladder to the wall, and I didn't realize I wasn't Spider-Man, and the next minute I knew I was going to the air, and I landed on my side and broke my right hip.
Ah, bless your heart.
And they had to, it snapped like a twig, so they had to put a ball and a thing down in my, my leg. So, it's pretty nasty, nasty falls, but I'm, I'm recovering.
Getting better.
Yeah, thank you, I, thank you for your concern, so now I can be nasty.
Blame it on the medication.
I didn't like the presentation on the budget. I'm, I'm tired of this PowerPoint stuff. You know, there's a book out by Robert Gates, he was former Secretary of Defense, and he was down on PowerPoint presentations. I'm down on PowerPoint presentations. I want to see the budget up there, I want to see the figures, that's it, I want to see it. I want us to go down line by line, thank you, and, and discuss it in public. Then we can talk about all these nice things we're going to do, we're going to make the lights all blink at the same time, and we're going to pave the roads. We can do that at another time, but we need to put the facts out here and go over it one by one. If it takes us two hours, that's the way it goes, we need to know where our money's going. As far as this paving stuff, this paving reminds me of using dirty water to wash dishes. I mean, if it's so great, why isn't the whole world using it? And we're going to go pave all this thing, and then somebody's going to have a big accident, and we're going to get sued for it. In the beginning, remember, we paid these people, we'll give you this money, if you go ahead and do it, and we'll try it out, and then, okay, you're liable, but now we're taking it over, and we're going to, we're going to make the stuff and put it out ourselves, we're going to be liable, not a, not a third party. These are some of the things that, that I'm concerned about, and I hope in the future, I hope when this comes up again in a couple of weeks, that we have this, we go over this budget, line by line, in public, so people, and, and the newspaper can read about it the next day, and people at home watching TV can know where their, their money's going. We're going to spend $25 million for the Sheriff's Department, we don't know, we're not discussing, how many officers are we going to have? Are we going to have more officers? Are we going to have officers on the boulevard? We need to talk about every cent we spent in this city.
Michael, Michael, do, do you know that that's, that's being done? I mean, we really do that, we sat down, I had a four-hour budget briefing, we talked about the Sheriff's Department, we talked about everything, where the money's going, and it's actually two four-hour meetings.
You didn't, excuse me, Vice Mayor, you didn't sit down with Mike Reeves and talk about it?
Okay.
You know, you didn't talk about it with all these people in the room. We need to have it out there, we're going to spend every dime so we can justify it. Look at our, I've talked to you about this, this 14th sanitation district thing. They're, you know, they've just pulled the biggest number in the world on everybody and increased our rates, and people are suffering, and, and like people like me that have a mortgage, they have to pay more, $250 more on escrow every year to pay these guys in the 14th district. So we have a right to know where our money's going, we're paying for it, and I think when we come up again in two, two more weeks, we go through this budget on the screen for the people of Lancaster can see where this money's going.
Michael, I'd be glad to sit down with you and go through it line by line.
Okay, well, thank you for your time and your concern.
Wait a minute, isn't anybody else going to sit down with him and go line by line?
Well, Mr. Reeves, I would go with you line by line, but I actually loved the PowerPoint. I love PowerPoints, and everyone has a right to their, you know, own opinion of what they like and dislike. I'm a picture, I'm a individual has, you know, has to have a visual, I understand we need to go line by line, however, as our Vice Mayor shared, that was a, a two-session, four hours each day, and I don't know if the citizens want to sit here for eight to 10 hours today to go line by line, however, all this information is public and it is available, and if you'd like to meet with us, we would be more than happy to do that and go line by line. There's nothing to hide, and we're very proud of how we've budgeted the funds and continue to do so. Thank you.
Michael, I didn't go line by line, I'm not going to go line by line. We have an incredibly competent staff, we have an incredibly competent city council, we divide up the responsibilities, and quite frankly, I didn't go over one line, because I'm confident with the people that sit here that they're doing their job correctly, and it, it is absurd to take that much manpower and do the same job one or two people can do. So you know how it works. I don't want anybody thinking that I went over this line by line, that's not what I do, that's what Marvin does. And I think it works very well, I think it works incredibly well when we have, when we just divide out the, the responsibilities for the city, and then hold people accountable for doing it at 110%, but if we were all trying to do the same thing, we'd probably do it pretty well, but we would do this much of what we're doing. Makes sense to you? Thank you. All right.
Mayor, if I may, I, I also believe, too, that's the purpose of the election process, and so I would hope that there would be some trust in the fact that the five of us that were placed up here, that there's some understanding that, as I did go line by line and set through through those briefings, that hard questions were asked. I have a, I have a list here of the questions, and Mark is very aware that I've been passionate about highways and streets and, and Avenue K. In fact, Mark got another early morning phone call about the backup on Avenue K, made it to the park, so the sooner we get Avenue K fixed, the better I would feel. So I do want you to, to understand, I know there was not a lot of questions asked tonight, and you're the only one that got up and spoke, but I, exactly what Mayor Paris says, there's trust going on, and he knows that there's. trust going on and he knows that there's people being held accountable. And ultimately, when we're not physically responsible, that's usually when people say, we don't want you around here no more. You're out of here. Right?
And the Deputy Mayor, she did come over and meet with you guys for four and a half hours. And the reason I asked the Deputy Mayor to do it is because she graduated from high school and I didn't. Right? True, I didn't.
Just, just one question for Michael. Michael, this budget is online. Have you read every line of the budget and gone through it?
No.
Okay, thank you.
That wasn't very nice. All right, let's, let's close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion that we direct staff to schedule the budget adoption for June 24, 2014.
A second.
Let's vote. Moving on. New business item one. That would be, we'll hear the, the report from Senior Projects Coordinator, Luis Garabet.
Good afternoon or evening now, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. For your consideration is an agreement to continue the city's partnership with the Corporation for Community and National Service to host AmeriCor Vistas again in Lancaster. If you recall, a little less than a year ago, the city originally partnered with the Corporation of National Community Service to bring our current Vista volunteers, which are here, Michelle Barone, Amanda Reyes and Clyde Viasas Narros to Lancaster to help develop a brand-new, community-wide volunteer program. Now, in a moment, I'll be handling, handing it over to them so they can talk a little about the progress of the new One Link volunteer program that they helped develop and then kind of provide a little insight on some of the new things that they're currently working on to help expand the program. Now, while this agreement will allow us to recruit a new crop of Vista volunteers for this One Link program, it'll also allow us to recruit additional vistas to work on an exciting new health and wellness initiative that's being spearheaded by the Lancaster Neighborhood Vitalization Commission and AV Partners for Health. Stephen Derryberry, still here, cool. All right. Chairman of the Lancaster Neighborhood Vitalization Commission is here and he'll talk a little bit about what we hope to accomplish through this new program and how the vistas are going to play a vital role in helping promote health and wellness in the community. So with that, I'd like to invite Michelle Barone up to the podium to talk a little bit about the One Link program.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So I first would like to start off by saying thank you for, for having the vision of a volunteer program and partnering with AmeriCor to bring three of us here to make this idea come into fruition. I am truly grateful for your support. So during the research and outreach phase of the development of the new volunteer program, it was to our surprise that we discovered over 1,000 nonprofit organizations within the Antelope Valley. This quickly became a larger task than we envisioned, so we created a community needs survey to better understand the organizations and services currently provided as well as the needs in Antelope Valley. With our mission in mind, we established the name, mission and vision of the new community-wide volunteer program, One Link. The One and One Link represents the positive impact one individual can make in the community in which they can lead, inspire and connect individuals and organizations through volunteerism. Our mission is to advocate leadership, spark inspiration and connect the community through volunteerism. The vision of One Link is to be a united community proud to volunteer. So after months passed of collecting data from the survey, we discovered that, one, there are a variety of volunteer opportunities, however, many individuals are unaware of these opportunities. And number two, there's opportunity for organizations to partner with each other. With that in mind, as the first component of the One Link program, we developed a volunteer hub for the Antelope Valley, onelink.org. We were super excited to announce the launch of the website in March. And here to discuss the website in greater detail, I invite Amanda to the podium.
Good evening.
I can't contain myself. Do we have the trademark for the One Link?
I don't know. We are working on that.
That is marvelous. What a great name.
Thank you. Since the launch in March, we have been actively reaching out to the community, inviting both volunteers and organizations to be a part of the One Link program and website. Collectively, we have attempted to connect with hundreds of community service, nonprofit and faith-based organizations. We've attended over a dozen events such as Salute to Youth and the Poppy Festival and visited various committees and coalitions in order to introduce the One Link program and its beneficial resources. Currently, we have over 30 organizations registered on the One Link site. Increasingly, as the word about One Link gets out, we hear from organizations on an almost daily basis expressing interest in participating with One Link as well as their need for volunteers. On the One Link website, volunteers will find a growing list of over 50 opportunities around the Antelope Valley. Our marketing plan includes incentives for signing up as a volunteer, creating a recruitment video, sharing flyers around the community and growing our social media presence. We invite you to follow the progress of One Link on Facebook, Instagram and Twitter. And now Clyde will share more about the future of One Link.
Thank you, Amanda. We are continuing to work on a series of tools and programs to help strengthen our nonprofit community. According to the community survey, we identified the need for an upgraded, sorry, updated resource guide. Several years ago, the community had a resource guide called the Red Book. That was a valuable tool. However, it quickly became outdated and because of that, the vistas took the lead in developing a more comprehensive and upgraded version now known as the Link Book. As a result of the outreach and the verifications, we've consolidated the various resources and created the Link Book, which is a listing of services available to the community. We hope to make the Link Book available online within the next month. As discussed by Amanda, the goal of the website is to be a valuable resource to the nonprofit community. The One Link website has a resource tab that will include training manuals regarding volunteer management, recruitment, training and retention. We are also finalizing recommendations for a new community-wide volunteer recognition program, which will celebrate the successes and the impact of volunteers in the community. So with your help, we hope to go over our recommendation and begin the implementation of this program before the end of the summer. So this is only a small piece of what the program aims to accomplish. The vistas serving next year will be a vital component for continuing the program and providing important resources to the community. We would like to thank the Mayor, City Council, city staff, Mark, Kelvin and Luis for the generous support. We're excited for, we're excited to see the growth of this program within the next couple of months. I'd like to now, I'd like to now introduce Mr. Stephen Derryberry, Chairman of the Lancaster Neighborhood Vitalization Commission, to discuss the proposed health and wellness initiative. Thank you.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. The last many years, the Lancaster Neighborhood Vitalization Commission has been slightly lost with our direction admittedly. And we have the Unite program in the fall and we were having a hard time trying to fill in the, fill in the gap between and, and the next fall. So this last year, we focused on the health and wellness of our neighborhoods. Let's face it, how do you vitalize or revitalize a neighborhood if the neighborhood's not healthy? So our, our commission thankfully is filled with people that are far more intelligent than I am relative to have the health and wellness of our community. So I've relied heavily on them. We've come up with this idea to expand what the vistas have already kind of put in place, except taken away from the volunteer aspect of it and providing our community with education and resources that are available through a, an online resource. That, that red book that Clyde spoke about was something that was heavily relied on by the community-based organizations, the health community and, and to be able to find out where the resources are. So we tried to find out, what would these companies, community-based organizations, for-profit, not-for-profit look for in a community-based website like, similar to the One Link, based on health and wellness, education and that sort for our community? And we've had half a dozen or so meetings the last six months. We, we take, take our community into the, to the lantern here on the, at the MOA and we just have an open conversation. I, I felt that moving it from council chambers where it's very formal and people are often very nervous to come up and speak to seven of us that are in front of them, we, we brought our, our community-based organizations, the hospital, the Kaisers, the high desert medical groups of this community, they came and they told us what they would look for. And so we've, we've basically come up with a really great idea to be able to, to make it web-based. Let's tell everyone what we have. When we all, all of us or, or most of us at least are on, on some sort of social media to be able to update what's going on based upon, at any given time. There's apps on our phones that give us that ability. So why can't these community-based organizations do the same thing and use it in a way that's, that's easy? So, you know, we plan on having something that's, that's two ways to log in, one for the community and one for the organization so that they could, everyone could talk to each other. So that we can use the wellness homes. I mean, let's face it, there's no community calendar that's easily accessible for these, these, these wellness homes that we have in our community. And they're not being used often enough. So if we have a calendar they can log into and access ADPH's database, maybe they'll get used more often. Let's educate the community so that we can help vitalize neighborhoods. So I would, along with the, the current vistas and the, and the other city staff, also request that you guys agree to, to execute this memorandum to get some more vistas out so help, so we can expand our programs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just with that, we, staff would ask Council approve the memorandum of agreement between the Corporation of National Community Service and the City of Lancaster. And we're here to answer any questions that you may have regarding either program.
Any questions?
I have a question. I'd like to say, Mr. Derryberry, I recall when you first did come up talking about the Red Book and you even showed us the Red Book. And it is very old-school as, as we were sharing. I, I love Vista, first of all, the three of you, Michelle, Amanda and Clyde. When you first came on board too, you could tell that it was like, we don't, we don't know where to start, what to do, what's going on. And now you guys have just blossomed to be these leaders and bringing these new journeys to us, to our community. And I'm very excited about taking away the Red Book and having it into a Link Book. I think that's truly today's society. And as you're saying, Mr. Derryberry, there's so many things out there in our community that is there for the use of our citizens and we're not aware of it because it's not easy access. So I'm looking forward to the design of that. And the design of One Link is just really, really wonderful. And you three, I see you all the time at, at functions and you guys have a beautiful smile on your faces and you guys volunteer. Just amazing, you're a great example and we appreciate everything that you guys have done. Thank you.
Stephen, do we have Wi-Fi in the wellness homes and in the neighborhood impact homes?
I'm not sure. I actually don't believe so. We have a computer on site at some of them, but as far as the other capacity, I don't believe if it's, if it's currently set up. I'm inclined to say no.
Yes, last time I was there, I don't recall there being any there either.
Figure out a way, would you?
Absolutely.
Thank you. And if you need funding, let me know. All right. Okay, good. I mean, it doesn't work if they don't have Wi-Fi, right? Good. Any other questions? Any speaker cards?
None.
You're kidding.
No.
All right. Michael, you okay? It's a long walk, isn't it, Michael?
I'll make a motion we approve NB1.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. And buy an apple. Thank you. Okay. That's it, huh? So what did everybody think about the four o'clock meeting? Oh, we got speaker cards. Any problems with it? Did it work? Anybody not like it? You know where this is going, don't you? Let's think about it. All right? I was going to say it if you didn't. Okay. Why do we have council reports in ahead of it? Let's do the council reports after the speaker cards. Okay. Want to do the speaker cards or not? Good, thank you.
This is the time to address the City Council, agency and authority on non-agendized matters. Please complete the speaker card, which can be found on the back table of the council chambers. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. State law prohibits the City Council from taking action on items not on the agenda and your matter will be referred to the City Manager.
Thank you. David Paul.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council, good evening. It's a good meeting today. I like the four o'clock start because you get home earlier and the city staff doesn't have to extend their time. Speaking to staff, Mark and Jason, that was phenomenal, your presentation. I was very impressed because I mentioned before, I'm taking this class on effective leadership through emotional intelligence. And I brought this up here because this is what you demonstrated, cognitive intelligence competencies and systems thinking, perceiving multiple causal relationships and understanding phenomenon or events and pattern recognition, perceiving themes or patterns and seemingly random events, items or phenomena. The other thing that academia can't teach you is how to keep the weasels from screwing you over. And so I appreciate that you understand through trial and error that Edison is not going to help us. So we all understand that right at the start. You know, over Memorial Day, I was fortunate to watch this program about world leaders, what they did in the First World War and how they got into the Second World War. And there's this thing about Hitler and Hitler was arrested for trying to overthrow the government and then they gave him a government job. That doesn't make any sense to me, you know? But, but my boys watched this with me. That's what impressed me the most. And they learned something about history. I saw this ticker on the bottom of the TV on one show said that 50% of people under 30 don't know what the Holocaust is. And I thought to myself, well, that's, that's tragic because then these things happen again. But the future is, is also repeating and unfolding. And it's wonderful to be in here and see us grapple with the future and all the intelligence you convey. It, it, it makes me very happy. If there would be one thing that I would wish for my city tonight is that we look at how water is being wasted. Because I still see people washing their cars and these are kids. I see kids the other day, they got the hose, they're just washing the cars, they're washing off the sidewalk into the street. And a lot of the sprinklers run down the streets and we could do a lot better. You know, it just seems like we should put a little more effort into thinking how we're going to get people to understand that this is a serious problem. And it's a problem that could prevent all the growth that we're trying to, and progress we're trying to make if we, if we let this run amok. So that's my only thought, but thank you so much, guys. That was phenomenal, Jason. I, I was impressed with your presentation. And city staff, thank you all for the work you do. I love living in this city. Thank you.
Thanks, David. David, I took that class on the, on Coursera. It was the most beneficial class I've ever taken. It, it changed an incredible amount of things the way we do them now. So I highly recommend it. Kurt Boyer.
Good evening.
Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Council.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for the time you gave me on Saturday with a brief conversation and the invitation to come and speak. I'm impressed by One Link and I'm very familiar with the Red Book. But I'm here to represent the homeless, the downtrodden, the drug addicted, the alcoholic and the elderly. I work the street, obviously not dressed as I am. But I see these people sleeping in front of the library and I talk to them. I go out to the desert and I talk to them. I deal with the people that need help now that don't know where to go. It's a wonderful thing to coordinate the organizations. I'm doing it myself as it is. Today, I spent time with a doctor that's assigned through county to reconstruct the county mental health system. He's estimating that going from 30 to 40% overhead, he's going to drop it below 20. That throws so much more money into the bucket for us to pay for these services. I know the city is caring and, and she worries about her population. But what I'm presenting is an idea, and again, I've spoken to these organizations, places like Barks Altadana, the Wellness Center, Mental Health America. I'm actively involved with all of them. And we need- we need help now. It's, again, as I said, a wonderful thing, uh, that we can coordinate the Red Book into a new, uh, uh, output, and that one organization can communicate with the other. But will they do it? That's the question. Because it's not happening now. It never happened with the Red Book. You can walk into one of these organizations, and they're not going to tell you how to deal with another. I've helped people get SSI. I've helped people get GR. GR is a very difficult process for these people that are mentally ill. They have no clue how to do it, and I, I work as an advocate for them. People don't even know about the pilot program, which allows them housing. People don't know that Mental Health America actually can get you an apartment and will pay for your, uh, security deposit. They do it all the time. I'm very active in these, these organizations. What I am proposing is I will offer my services for the street, not for the six meetings where you sit down and you, you hash things out. I need immediate needs. I'm proposing something where, and I've talked to the organizations, they agree with it, a document. I carry individual documents with me, but a document supervised by the city that lists the eight most important organizations that these people need immediately. Not a doctor in Palmdale, not, uh, uh, you know, the, these other things. If you look through the Red Book, it's, it's exceedingly confusing. I've got six seconds left. So I'm hoping that I, I receive some sort of response, because I would love to offer my services and work with this. It is important that we do it now. Thank you all.
Thank you. Michael Reeves?
We need a portable mic. I'm serious.
Mayor Paris, uh, Council, I'm asking the Council of the night to support, uh, on a resolution, the, uh, the building of a VA hospital on the grounds of AV Hospital. AV Hospital is going to be vastly improved in the next few years. I, I think in 10 years we have the opportunity to create one of the largest and best medical complexes in this county, maybe in this state. There are a lot of things in the works for AV Hospital right now, and I think that, and it's not impossible. It's been done at other medical centers where a VA hospital has been built on the grounds of AV Hospital. I would like the Council to go on record favoring the building of a, a VA hospital on the grounds of AV Hospital and support us, uh, in this endeavor. I realize that the VA is having problems right now, but in the current legislation that's going to be shared with the House, they are going to lease buildings to create more VA facilities in the United States. And we are currently in the largest healthcare, VA healthcare district in the, in the country. It takes you five hours to go from San Luis Obispo to West LA for treatment. Uh, the hospital in West LA is the largest VA facility in the United States. So it seems fitting that we could build another VA facility halfway down the coast for the, uh, the veterans would not have to travel to Sepulveda or West LA. And believe me, uh, I spoke today with the CEO of, uh, Antelope Valley Hospital about the future of AV Hospital, because I'm, I, I really believe this is the future of our community. And it is feasible. It can be done if the community gets behind this, uh, this project and, uh, our, our congresspeople get behind it. We can try to promote this and see if we can be one of the beneficiaries of this new legislation where the Congress is going to, uh, create new facilities to serve the veterans. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Willie Green?
Mayor, council members. Uh, first, I'd like to say thanks to the council and to the city manager. I was here, um, four months ago, uh, speaking about a market. And there is one being placed in the, uh, Old Goodwill Building on Avenue I. So I thank you for your efforts. Um, I'm here this evening, um, Sierra, um, Retirement Village, uh, next to, um, Stan Bowling Center. I'm here by the sidewalk between those two buildings. Um, people that live in those apartments travel to the bowling center. Uh, to watch people bowl, get a snack. But the pathway, and they use electric chairs, is full of holes, rocks, and it's not easy to motivate a wheelchair. And the curb paths were damaged, the wheelchairs. To alleviate this, uh, some people drive, uh, drive on the edge of the, uh, roadway. And this is dangerous. And the sidewalk, the distance between the two buildings would be approximately 200 feet by four feet. And I contacted, uh, Public Works, and to no avail. I was connected with, um, an engineer, but I had to leave a message. Never got a call back. Uh, to me, this is serious because it could be life-threatening. And two things that I would like is for someone to take 15 minutes and make an observation and see if the condition is as I say. And second, if it is, to expedite putting in a sidewalk.
Mr. Green?
Yes?
Tomorrow. Tomorrow? Building and safety out there?
Uh, yeah, we will look at that. I'm familiar with that situation. We will look at it tomorrow.
Okay. That, that is probably the landowner's responsibility, but we can make them do it. Uh, but we will, we will get right on that for you.
I appreciate it.
And I appreciate you bringing that to us. Uh, you know, with, with that population falling is, is not something we can allow. Okay?
Okay. Thank you very much.
And Mr. Green, I appreciate you coming in and alerting us to this stuff. It, it, it improves the city, and I, I thank you for your efforts in doing that. And we'll also find out why you didn't get a call back, okay?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Kevin Truke? Luke? I'm sorry.
(inaudible).
Oh, that's a period after the A. Okay.
That's the only reason I kept it.
Here, they'll help you in a second. They'll bring that down for you.
Does anyone want to go down?
Yeah.
No, I just came here, and I, I, I'm sorry about leaving so fast. Last time, I had some medical issues that came up, but I thank you guys for your time. I just want to see what the status is on that restroom that should have been renovated to make it wheelchair-accessible. And the Mediterranean Cafe, I have yet to, uh, hear anything about that.
Do you know anybody about?
I know the restaurant. I'll, we'll have to research it because they're already open. I don't know what the condition placed on them is and such, but we can find out.
When did they open?
Uh, within last year to 18 months.
They have to be handicap compliant.
We can certainly check on what the condition is. As I sit here right now, I can't give you an answer. But we can certainly deal with you if you call tomorrow. We'll be happy to deal with that.
Well, I've already dealt with you guys, and you guys keep on finding these little things saying that it was built before 1972. And I don't know of any thing in the American Disability Act that says buildings built before 1972 were exempt from ADA.
There are some exemptions, but what we can do is we can show that specifically to you and, and show you what the condition on the restaurant is. There may be a condition apart from that that they have to improve it.
So I've already been in the thingy-bubber. It's kind of, it's kind of like this. You have the floor here, and they have a little chair. It's kind of narrow. And then there's a ramp that goes up. The ramp's only about this big, and it's got like little stills, stills there, and you walk up this little ramp. And then on the back there, there's the back doors right there, and the restroom's right there. It could have been made wheelchair-accessible. And, uh, me and my, a lot of my colleagues that we, that are in wheelchairs, we always ask, okay, so why wasn't it made wheelchair-accessible at this time? Um, 'cause I, I, what I've heard is the nasty stories. Someone goes in there and says, oh, you're not wheelchair-accessible? They actually closed the, the whole business down. No one works until it's done, which means those waitresses don't get paid. The people who run the restaurant aren't going to make money. You guys lose taxes. And it's really a simple ideal to...
Mr. Luke?
...six-inch door.
Mr. Luke?
Yeah.
I agree with you. Figure out a way. Okay? Thank you.
That's your call? Hey, congratulations, Mr. Chris. You guys have a good day.
Thank you.
And thank you for your time.
Okay. Council reports. I'm going back to China in September. City manager's going with us. I would like to take two high school kids with us, figure out a contest, you know, a way to select them. Uh, I'll fund it. But, uh, let's see if we can get a cross thing going with Beijing where, you know, we can develop some cultural exchange with them. And I want to, I want to utilize, I want to, uh, expand the potential of the trip. Okay? Thank you. Uh, let me know who you put in charge of that. And, but we got to move fast because they're going to have to get passports and all that. Okay?
They're also out of school, so we'll have to figure out a way to identify them.
Okay. We might do it through neighborhood impact. I mean, however you want to do it. All right? Good. Uh, no action on the housing authority?
If I just remind everyone about, uh, this Saturday is the Jazz Festival? Am I head?
Your head.
I'm sorry. Never mind. Sorry.
Okay, that's okay. Financing authority, no action. Power authority, no action. Successor agency, no action. Uh, city manager?
Just one announcement. I apparently said it's bad for Kent and good for us that he got his new job. I obviously meant the opposite of that. Sorry, Kent.
He doesn't care.
He's a nice guy. I think he does. I think he'd be hurt.
Uh, we've already done the city clerk. And now?
Now?
It's the council.
(laughing) Thank you, Mayor. I apologize for that. Just wanted to, uh, remind everyone that this Saturday is the Second Annual Jazz Festival at the Fairgrounds. The, uh, doors open at 4:00 PM, and it is Father's Day weekend, so it would be a great gift to, um, have for your, uh, father. Um, so hopefully we'll see you guys there.
Anyone else? Okay, we're going to go into executive session. When we come back, we're going to adjourn in memory of Delmar Van Dam, a longtime resident, local dairy farmer, and well-known businessman of the Antelope Valley. He was active in the Antelope Valley Fair, sponsoring the Van Dam Family Legacy Hall and the Van Dam Pavilion. He will be missed by family and friends. Thank you.
Great guy.
We will be back. We will reconvene after the, uh, closed session to discuss matters listed, items one through 10.
On the agenda.
On the agenda. Before I leave this job, I will learn the magic words.
In closed session, the city council considered two items of anticipated litigation. No reportable action.
But we were there for an hour.
We didn't get much done.
Okay. The city council meeting is adjourned until Tuesday, June 24th, 2014. Do we have to put it on the agenda to switch the time meeting, the meeting times?
Yeah, it's set by resolution, so we would need to do a new resolution, uh, setting the time.
Put that on the agenda for the next meeting. We'll, we'll kick it around and decide if we want to do it. Okay?
Very good.
Uh, four o'clock?
Four o'clock?
No. Day four o'clock? No, do it, just leave it open, and we'll see what the council wants. Okay, so it's just discussion and possible action concerning... Changing the time.
You want a resolution with a blank in it, so you can fill it in?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. And, you know, make sure it's announced. I want public comment on it. I don't want anybody to think we're not, you know, making, I mean, I do want to hear their comments on it, but it seemed to work very well tonight. Right? Okay, we're adjourned until Tuesday, June 24th, 2014, at 5:00 PM. Carol, I'm coming to pick you up because we have to go someplace.